Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular scheduled meeting for the La Sure City Council dated June twenty seven, two thousand twenty-two. At this time, we will call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledgeable Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, you were all presented with the packet with the tonight's agenda earlier in the week or at late last week. You've had an opportunity to look it over. This time I'll entertain any motions to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Sullivan?
Second.
Mr. Crowe, thank you. Any other discussion, comments, concerns, if not all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. This time we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be entered, the items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, citizen, so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. This time, I will ask our city administrator to review these items with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda, we have five items. The first is approved city council minutes from the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Item B, approved disbursements through today, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, which includes a number of items over twenty-five thousand dollars, which are called out separately in your agenda packets. A payment to B and B Transformer for sixty-three thousand seventy-eight dollars for electric transformers. Bolton and Bank, engineering work on the well eight and wellhouse project in Main Street for twenty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty cents. Minnesota Department of Revenue, forty thousand fourteen dollars for May two thousand twenty-two city sales tax. And a check to US Bank for seventy-eight thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars twenty-five cents, and that's for our two thousand twenty-one A debt service payment. Item C, approved liquor license for Max Green Mill. Item D, approve surplusing some city properties, specifically the nineteen eighty-four fire tanker. And finally, the item E, personnel actions, some new hires for our electric department and police department and public works department.
Any questions for our city minister about these items? Any comments? Any concerns? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Huntington. Any discussion, comments, concerns, if not all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to public comment, this provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Person wishing to make comment must sign up in advance of the meeting and on the sheet provided and identify themselves with their name and their address. At this time, do we have anybody that would like to address the council? Mr. Bill Muskovich, would you like to address the council? Please, please.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Bill Muskovich. I've been a LeSor resident since nineteen sixty-nine. I currently live at one twenty-seven North Park Lane, LeSor, also known as Green Acres. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, it's not so green anymore. If you drive up and down Park Lane, a lot of the grass is white now. It's getting pretty bad. And last year, I lost my front yard, and I spent a lot of money and a lot of revenue trying to get my yard to come back. It come back, but I'm losing it again. Number one, I can't afford to water it. Putting down a hundred dollars for the water means a three hundred dollar sewer charge and a four hundred dollar utility just for water and sewer. I'm not the only person in that boat. If you could drive up and down to some of the new construction on Ferry Street, Forest Street, and Bridge Street. There was a lot of grass that was replaced by sod or reseeded, and that's the route that I walk, and it's dead. It's not coming back, and people are not watering. So here's my thought. A few people I've talked to thought it's a great idea. It's always a good idea before you, you know, put it all into plan. Be nice to have a moratorium on sewer charges for the month of June, July, and August, so people could afford to water their grass, keep things green. Now, this sewer charge is, this is a, trying to build up the revenue for the sewer system, right?
Are you talking about the drain sewer?
Well, no, I'm just talking about this, whatever, you know, the money that you're being charged. You know, whatever dollar you spend for water, you, the three times amount goes into the sewer fund, right?
Well, do you have a, I guess I'm a little confused, Bill. Or do you have a separate meter for outdoor watering?
No, I do not.
Okay.
And I understand they're trying to get away from separate meters.
That, that's, doesn't it? Well, I, I just know that years ago, they put in two meters for people to ask for them. I believe you need to pay for those meters, but that way it registers what you're putting on your lawn, and then you're not being charged for sewer.
But you also pay monthly charge for the whole year. You don't get paid for the couple of months, right? You get paid monthly for the full year. You gotta pay for that thing, whether you use it or not.
For the meter.
For the meter, you gotta pay for it.
Yes.
Regardless of you use it or not. Most people are not going to spend that money, first of all, to have, I don't know what it is, I think it's around a hundred fifty dollars, have the meter put in. And they're not going to go about trying to do this to water their grass. They're just saying, the hell with it, just let it go. And I grew up in Green Acres. I've been living there since nineteen seventy-six, so it's been a beautiful place to live. It's not pretty anymore. Take a drive through Green Acres someday, and you'll see how bad the lawns look. It's bad. It's not, you know, and we've got ordinances against, you know, keeping your grass cut, keeping it look nice, keeping the noxious weeds down. Ferry, Ferry Street, it's all weeds now. There's no grass there that has been sodded and been seeded. They sodded it last year and didn't come back because it wasn't watered. This year, they went through it with a slit seeder, and they seeded both the Boulevard and some of the people's lawns. It's not growing because they're not watering. It's dead. You can see the grass seed laying there, and it's, it's not being watered. Just the thought, if we could, you know, it's not gonna, um. My feelings, we, we could do this, you know, maybe next year it'll rain, and that's fine. It's, it's not a big deal, but the last, these last two years, it's, it's bad. And I'd like to keep my grass going, but I can't. I've gotta let it go, and it's gonna cost me a lot of money again. So just my thought, if we could put a moratorium and think about the money, you know, the, the city has to look at. I know, I know there's ramifications with this, but just the thought, if we could back off on the sewer rate, so people could afford to water and let it be known to the people, the public saying, hey, we're not gonna charge you that much anymore for the three months. Maybe we have to have a sign up. I don't know what it is. But anyway, that's just my thoughts, and I wanted to prove, you know, approach the council on this and just give my thoughts on.
Bill, thank you for sharing that with us. I, I guess I just want to kind of encourage you to maybe consider putting in a separate meter, though, for your outside watering. It really, really alleviated a lot of those charges, and I'm sure the city would work. It's a one-time expense, and they would probably work with you.
I realize that, but then I gotta figure where I'm gonna put my separate meter, so which, I've got three outside faucets, no, four outside faucets, so I can only use one then.
Why? Yeah, why, I, I think I would consider having a plumber look at it.
Well, yeah, no, because I know how my plumbing is, and each line is, each line, it goes, that's how my house is, on a separate line, so you can't put a meter in to connect all three lines. For all four lines, I guess I've got.
Well, Bill, I appreciate your input for tonight, and we will definitely give that some consideration, and I won't encourage anybody who wants to water and doesn't have a separate meter. They should really, I won't really stress that they should put one in to kind of alleviate these charges.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Bill.
When you're thinking about it, drive up down some of these streets and look at them.
Oh, I have, I have. Yeah, it's been dry. We are entering the, the month of July, which is the driest month of the year, so. Um, moving on, anybody else? I think that was the only person tonight that was gonna speak to the council. Bill, thank you, and you have a good night. Moving on to the administration report, city administrator report, Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Um, I've got a couple of items here I want to talk about really quickly. I would just like to, the, the water meter issue, just to, just to make sure that everyone is on the same page. The city does continue to offer secondary meters, irrigation meters, called the supplemental meter, which is specifically registered with the city as having no wastewater charge associated with it. There is a monthly service fee associated with that meter, and that is a charge that literally covers the, the connection of the meter to our system and the reading of, the reading of that meter throughout the year. Understanding that most people don't use theirs in, in the wintertime, but some do, even in the off-season. And that's one thing that we, we certainly encourage for people. We have the conversation probably every other week during the summer, people concerned about their sewer, their sewer wastewater bill and using, using it for irrigation. And we, we do encourage them to contact our water department and inquire about a separate meter. Foster's here, in fact. They're, I encourage people to seriously look at that. There is an upfront expense, and you have to have a plumber install it, it has to be inspected. But for a lot of people who do a fair amount of watering, whether it's for a lawn or it's for a garden, it really can save a material amount of money. Understanding that I'm telling people that they can not pay the city as much money, but, but for some people, it's absolutely the right option. So we do not discourage people from getting a secondary meter or an irrigation meter. Simply give a call to the water department if you'd like more information. There was a question earlier about, just before the meeting started, brought to my attention about the water tower, the new composite elevator water tower that's going in behind the fire station on Kingsway. People have noticed that there is a blanket or envelope that is coming down around the water tower. Some days, it's up a little higher, some days, it's all the way down. Right now, what the, the crew at the water tower is doing is sandblasting, so they're sandblasting the interior and the exterior of the tank to prepare it for painting. So they can't paint it until they get all the welds sanded down and the surface prepped for painting. So it's to, to keep the dust level down outside of the, the blanket. I, I would like to thank the council and also the La Sore Henderson School Board and Superintendent Jim Wagner for, for last week's meeting. I thought it was a very productive meeting, great presentation. Appreciate council's questions and some of the clarifications that Superintendent Wagner and the school board members were able to, to bring to last week's meeting. I thought it was very valuable to have both bodies meet to discuss the referendum here coming up in August. Uh, we're currently, I know later on in our agenda, we have an item to consider the approving the hiring of a finance director. As, as councils aware, earlier this year, the, the city had also posted for a finance analyst position, which we had offered, council had approved, and that individual ended up backing out of the position. Now, so we reposted for the position in May, and that position has now closed, and we will be, we are conducting interviews for that position right now. So my hope is, if everything goes smoothly, that we would have something to counsel either the next meeting, the July eleventh meeting, or the following meeting for, for consideration. I gave the similar update to the EDA before tonight's council meeting on the community development director position. That, that position is closing on June thirtieth. We have received applications for that position so far, and once that position closes, then Human Resources Director, City Clerk, Communications Director Stacy Lawrence and I will go through all those applications, begin the scoring process before conducting interviews. Those are the key items I wanted to bring up tonight. Any questions for me before we move on?
Just one quick one. The water tower on schedule, everything is where it's supposed to be.
And everything is on schedule right now, yes.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to our next item is the regular agenda, when we will start with item seven, A, wastewater ten-year capital plan. Mr. Roby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite to the podium Public Services Director Rich Kachera and Water Wastewater Department Manager Foster Transburg. I'm not sure who's gonna do the majority of the speaking, likely Foster. Yes, so, so Foster comes to council every, you know, whenever we ask him to, but a few times a year to talk about all the important things that the water and wastewater departments are doing. And one thing in particular that he's here to talk about tonight is the ten-year capital plan for the wastewater department. Do you want the clicker? Do you want me to just tell me when to advance?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just tell you.
Okay.
Okay, so, welcome, or my name is Foster, Water Wastewater Manager. If you want to go to the next slide. So we have five lift stations within the city of the sewer, seven total, but five outside of the city. That's, excuse me, there's two actually at the wastewater treatment facility, and then the other five are, are, you know, throughout the city. Lift station four is located at corner and Lynn Street in Kingsway. Lift station six is located on Minnesota Avenue. Lift station nine is located on the south side of Fourth Street. Next slide, please. Henderson Station Road is, lift station is located Henderson Station Road. It's where Henderson, Henderson's wastewater dumps into our system, and that's where we take over from there. Mail Park Lift Station is on the south side of Mail Park. Next slide. All right, we're looking at the wastewater treatment facility at fifteen hundred North Commerce Street. On the very north side, you see the raw lift station. That's where the influent comes into the plant. Building C is the actual treatment facility of the plant. And then just below that are the aeration basins. Goes from the treatment facility and through the aeration basins, and then back through treatment facility. And then out to the effluent basin, which is there to the west. I don't know if you can see it. Yeah, yeah, you kind of got it there, and then our biosol is going to building B. They're processed from building B, and they go into the hoop building just to the north of that. Building A is to the east there. That's the administration building, and then building D is the building that was acquired a few years ago, and that's used for storage. Next slide, please. Okay, so what we're looking at here is our ten-year capital plan. These are projects that have needed to be done over the last, looks, goes back to his replacement back to as far back as nineteen ninety-five up to currently. If you look at the next slide, up to two thousand twenty-two. So some of them have already been replaced over the last few years. And some of them are on a current capital plan, and some of them will be replaced in the future. So if you go to the next slide. So what we're looking at here is we did an overall plan, so it's not just a ten-year capital plan, it's an overall plan, and so when we're looking at the items there, we're actually looking at building A has fifty-six items overall, building B, one hundred fifty-four, and so on and so forth.
So this, this plan actually covers
Yes.
You know, the first item would have been, you know, we can say two thousand eight, but the last item, we can say like the clarifier tanks, you know, they have a seven-year life plan, so twenty seventy or twenty sixty. Everything, everything that is an item out at the wastewater plant or the lift station is an item in the spreadsheet, so we can try to plan the life expectancy of everything in the wastewater field.
Yep. So, yeah, tonight I'm briefing on the tenure plan, but basically, you know, we've gone out and have, have pretty good ideas as far as, you know, what the expenses will be over the next, you know, however many years life of the plant. Next slide, please. Okay, so over the next ten years, just looking at things from just a three percent annual inflation, which right now is hard to predict exactly what, where things are gonna be, but that's what we started out with. So as you look across here, for each building A, building B, building C, each one of the, the items, you can see twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, all the way out to twenty thirty-two projected costs as a, you know, this is pretty good cost as of two thousand twenty.
So when we built this, we used twenty twenty dollars. Yeah, we're, we're pretty confident with the twenty twenty dollars. So twenty twenty-one, you know, in the spreadsheets, you can see seven point one percent. That was the inflation dollar, so we can use that for, for real number. Every other year, we don't know. Common industry number is a three percent, so that's why it's noted there, three percent annual inflation. As these years evolve, we can obviously put that number in here, and that'll be more telling as we go forward. But this is obviously standard industry is three percent, so that's what we do right now.
So at this time, those are pretty conservative numbers at three percent.
Correct.
Very conservative.
Very conservative, correct.
But like we said, that's kind of the industry previous standard was three percent, so that's what we had to go with. And obviously, you can see twenty twenty-three as a memo, that's kind of the fifteen-year mark of the plant. That's why it's a big, bigger number. Twenty twenty-eight, that's twenty-year anniversary of the plant, obviously another bigger number, so.
Yeah, most, most plants see a substantial price, you know, it just takes a lot to, you know, there's a lot of replacements after twenty years. Equipment wears out, and even though with, with maintenance, everything is still, there's just equipment, you know, wears out, so. Uh, next page. So when you look at this, it's actually a breakdown year to year to year as far as like what we're looking at, big ticket items as far as what we're looking at for replacements. Big, the big one here is like PLCs, PLCs are the programmable logic controls. Basically, what they are is their computers and what holds the programs for, you know, to run the pumps.
Basically, it runs the, the plant.
Yes, yeah, correct, 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 so. Um, so.
How many of those computers are in that building C? Just, just the one? Or is there several for different pumps, or?
There's one main one.
One, yes, one main one, but then every component, so each clarifier then has a computer, each aeration basin has a computer, so you have one master to all the Yeah.
Yep.
So. So you see, the more components you have to a facility, the higher the dollars is.
Yep. Okay, next slide, please. So as you can see, when we get to twenty twenty-eight, that's probably, probably the biggest disbursement will be in twenty twenty-eight potential as far as replacements go. You know, if, if we need to purchase a new dryer at that timeframe, or if we'll be using a different process at that time, it, it just depends. But.
Actually, Joe, I'll let you lead it. You actually, we actually had a good conversation today about it. I think you, you can go ahead and lead it again.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so what I was just gonna add here is, so like, like Foster Rich said, we're trying to get the best handle we can on what the next ten years at least looks like for our wastewater treatment plant. Because we know as a city, we are going to be treating wastewater in ten years. This isn't like, well, maybe we will offer this service in ten years, maybe we won't. We will be treating our community's wastewater in ten years. And based upon that baseline, what is it going to cost us from a capital outlay standpoint to continue our current operation as it is? Based upon some fairly straightforward assumptions around inflation, around what lifespan is going to be for different pieces of equipment. So what, what Foster and, and Rich did here is they broke each of our buildings, each of our locations down into its component parts and evaluated each of those parts for what their lifespan was. And again, what I would emphasize here is that this is based upon what our current operation looks like. When we look at twenty twenty-eight, for example, as Foster and Rich said, this is these components here in building B, which is our biosolids building, the dryer, the centrifuge, the blower, the bake oven. All of these things is what we get. These components are what we need to generate our, our class A output from our biosolids department. There are different ways of handling biosolids in a wastewater treatment facility. This is one way. This is the way that the plant was designed to handle biosolids back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when it was brought online. And so again, this presumes that in twenty twenty-eight, that the most cost-effective way of handling biosolids will still be via centrifuge, blower, dryer, bake oven, and, and then, and storing biosolids in the hoop building. Is it possible that operations could change, that there might be a more cost-effective, long-term solution out there to deal with the sludge in the biosolids that we generate? It's very possible, and the team absolutely will continue to look and at other viable options for handling biosolids in particular and more broadly, handling the wastewater treatment plant. Our current plant is set up to operate exactly the way it is today. So if we were to modify, for example, the way that we handle biosolids at the end stage of the plant and say, well, we're not going to generate a class A biosolid anymore, we're gonna generate a class B and handle it a, you know, a different way, truck things out, do land applications, things like that. That involves changes to the plant, which involves capital outlay for that. But all of this is to say that this is our current plan based upon the current operational setup of the wastewater treatment plant. Things can change. New innovations are always being made, of course, and so the team at the city will continue to evaluate what the best, most cost-effective ways of operating this plant will be going forward, but we can't build the capital plan for something we don't know, so it's built based upon current operations.
Thank you. We go next page. You can see there's a few years of skipped. Obviously, there will be probably be needs in between there, but, you know, just depends on how things work out. You know, just, just projection here. And next page, twenty thirty-two. You know, there we are, ten years out, so. Any questions?
Mr. Snowman? Richard Foster, can you tell, remind me when our new permit comes into play with the lower levels or potentially lower levels of outputs?
It was ten years from when it was originally, the, the other permit originally came out, so it was actually twenty twenty-eight.
Is this including any updates we might have to do for that?
This is not.
So we could potentially see a large investment at that time.
I would, I wouldn't. Without quoting me, please, I would say at that time, we would get, if we would get a lower phosphorus limit, we would, I would hope get five years to implement that.
An additional five years on top of, essentially.
So there's gonna be a twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three implementation.
Okay, perfect.
So can I just clarify for those at home who, yeah, this is a complex subject. Specifically, we're allowed a certain level of phosphorus in the end product of water that we generate and that we, that we discharge. The state is looking very seriously at lowering that level of, you know, effectively parts per liter, or parts per gallon, I can't remember which, parts per million.
Milligrams per liter.
Milligrams per liter, and if they do lower that, that involves, like Councilmember Sullivan suggested, some changes to our plant to make sure that we can meet those, those lower levels.
And this is essentially what Murpuk fought back in whatever, would we say, twenty eighteen? back in whatever, would we say, twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen.
And that was what we got out of it was a ten-year license.
We got a ten-year extension.
With the current, current standards.
To be able to keep a one milligram per liter F1 instead of a point five.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Can we anticipate any other requirements that the state might impose? Do we have any any forecasting of other standards they might put on us? It may be impossible to know at this point, but.
They're they're talking some, we're doing some testing for nitrogen levels, also chlorides, PFOS. I know those ones for sure, right up.
Now, if they do that, it would seem to me that that would be an opportunity for us to approach our legislators at the at the state level to make sure we get some aid if they're going to put new requirements. How much, how much lead time do they give us if they're going to do things like this? You have any idea? I have no idea, quite frankly.
Usually, it's in the permit cycle. Usually, so it's a year.
We're actually very fortunate that we have two council members right now who've been involved in this type of process before. And it's really important, and we thank you, I do, for keeping us informed, because some of us, even though I was in council at the time, all the Murpuck stuff went on with the permitting. I wasn't a party to any of that, and so it's very important to keep us informed. So thank you very much.
And I would, I would add, if if it's all right, Mr. Mayor and Council, that in addition to the the chlorides and the PFOS and the nitrogen and the phosphorus and changes in regulations around those, our wastewater, our wastewater department is continually participating with with the state, both as required and as as if they see fit, and if it's if it's reasonable to participate in in studies around things like for COVID nineteen testing, for example.
Energy efficiencies.
Energy efficiencies, right, to determine whether our plant is operating as efficiently as it can. So really pleased and proud of the work that this group does to make sure that we are operating as efficiently as we can, providing the best service to our community that we can, and and being good stewards of the river basin ultimately.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I want to thank you for your work and for your report, and I think it's always good to forecast some of these expenses we have coming ahead of us, and also bearing in mind, you know, we we want to keep in mind that our water treatment, you know, there's the possibility of community growth, commercial and industrial increases also. So it's it's good to stay on top of this. So thank you for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on to item seven B personnel actions. Mr. Roby, you want to visit with us a little bit about the retirement of one of our employees?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our lead senior skilled electric line person, Jeff Arnt, who's been with the City of La Sure Electric Department for over thirty-eight years, and I'm sorry, Jeff, if I wasn't supposed to say that thirty-eight years out loud, but it's it's really extraordinary, the tenure that he's had with our electric department and the stability that he's brought for this department over those years, and 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 wisdom and helping to train new linesmen as they come on board, is really certainly something that's going to be missed. Mr. Arnt has submitted his notice of retirement resignation effective November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And so I normally this would go on consent, but I wanted to call this out and extend our appreciation for Mr. Arnt for his years of service to our community. And requesting a formal motion to accept his resignation effective November thirtieth of this year.
Okay, any motions for Mr. Arnt's retirement? Thank you, Mr. Swanberg, Mr. Sullivan. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Arnt, thank you for your long tenure with the City of La Sure. Moving on to item seven C, considering higher hiring of a new financial director, this would be filling your position, Mr. Roby.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just in in summary, effective May ninth, when I was named city administrator here for the city, the finance director position was effectively vacated. And so the city staff almost immediately began the posting process to begin the hiring process for a finance director. One thing that staff did look at very closely was the the possibility of of using an outsourced provider for the finance director position. For the general public, this is something that the city has done in the past for several years, up until twenty nineteen. The city used Abdo Ikenmeyer's, now Abdo, to provide an outsourced finance director. Abdo has been providing this service to us since early May under contract, which city council approved last month. And effectively, what it does is that they, Abdo provides two or three different resources, all of whom are very experienced in municipal finance, to cover the key elements of the finance director position, budget, monthly reports, audit, a variety of other things. And so Abdo has been providing this service to us. As I mentioned, staff had some discussions around this, considering that the city has used this service in the past for a longer term. And it's staff recommendation that in the interest of city business, the city overall is better served by a full-time in-house finance director. So this was an opportunity to evaluate that, considering we had had two years of a full-time in-house finance director, following several years of outsourced. And the recommendation is that we would continue with a full-time in-house finance director who is on city staff working out of City Hall. So while Abdo continues to serve as the interim outsourced finance director on a part-time basis, we went through the hiring process for a finance director. We interviewed two candidates. And what we have, what council has in front of you this evening is a proposal to approve the hiring of Mr. Ryan Graff as the next City of La Sure Finance Director. I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions regarding the hiring of Mr. Ryan Graff as our new financial director? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Krogman. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Graff. We're looking forward to working with you. Thank you. Moving on to comments, reports, items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity. This is your platform to share any community events or any committees you're serving. We will start with Councilmember Huntington, as always.
Actually, I have nothing today.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember Krogman.
I do not have anything either. Thank you.
Oh, for two. Councilmember Schleter.
A few things. On June fifteenth, for Region Nine Development, I participated in a bus tour. We visited Clear Lake Farm, the Black Cross Distillery in New Ulm, and the Springfield Community Center. And then at the full board meeting, Mankato Councilmember Mike Lawan was elected as the new board chair for Region Nine. Last Tuesday, we had the joint school board council meeting, and then I also attended tour of the school on Wednesday. Basically, they've got an antiquated boiler system, asbestos and plumbing issues, no central cooling system, clay brick structure, asbestos floor tiles, and the cost to bring up the old facility to current codes and standards, which would exceed replacement cost. Current buildings a detriment to bringing in families with kindergarten to grade five children to our community. It provides a poor learning environment, and will have a major negative impact on our future of our city if they can't get this to pass. My question is, city administrator, from the city's perspective, how does a positive outcome of the referendum affect our comprehensive plan, economic development, infrastructure growth, and partnership development? And how does a failure negatively impact the state?
Thank you, Councilmember Schleter. I have a number of responses that just off off the top around those, several of which I know I mentioned last week at the joint meeting around the comp plan, directly mentioning the 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 critical nature of the success of our schools, being to the to the benefit of the the city as a whole, certainly from an economic development standpoint, an infrastructure standpoint, and and partnerships as well. And a failure of the referendum that's been proposed and that will be on the August ballot would would certainly have some long-term negative consequences from my view as a city administrator. If it's all right with you, I'd like to unpack that a little bit and maybe present as part of my, either as part of my next city administrator update, or perhaps as a regular agenda item with an outline of that from a city standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schleter. Moving on to Councilmember Sullivan.
Just had an EDA meeting tonight. Nothing earth-shattering there. Then fire commission on Wednesday night.
Thank you. Councilmember Swanberg?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Williams is absent tonight. Did I miss Councilmember Krogman?
No.
Oh, you you said nothing. Okay. Counselor, Mayor Kirby has nothing to share tonight. Want to wish Mr. Arnt all our best, and and thank you for his years of service. And again, I I said it before, looking forward to working with our new city finance director, Mr. Graff. So with that, Mr. Roby, you have anything you want to close with?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay. This time, I will entertain a motion to dismiss this meeting. All those in favor?